Hi, everyone. Tonight, I just want to make you aware that we have a public hearing at 7:15. So I'm gonna move through the agenda until we get to 7:15.
And J.R. won't be with us.
Yeah, Vice Chair Colby is not gonna be in attendance tonight. So this is the public comment time to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the Select Board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the Chair. The Select Board will not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the Chair. Do we have any public comment tonight? Come on up. Sit your name and your address, please.
I'm Dick Hibbard, and this is my wife, Phyllis.
Hi.
We're from 35 16th Street. In regards to the proposed, yeah, proposed road.
Before you continue, I just want you to know that's not an agenda item tonight, so we'll take in your comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was one of our issues. Okay. We're mainly here to give voice to the fact that we're very concerned about the occurring, yeah, occurrence regarding the process of the emergency access issue. We're aware, the last meeting, there was a vote by the Board of Selectmen to approve a motion to engage the Conservation Commission to consider the tolerance for the alternate route at the meeting, next meeting. Obviously, that hasn't happened. Since it's affecting our problem most directly, we have a personal, yeah, our property, okay, we have a personal concern where it is reducing the size of our already small lot to a smaller one, therefore also reducing the valuation of our property by a great deal. In addition, the alternate proposed road would be much straighter, therefore making it much safer than the proposed plan. Again, we're concerned as to why the issue is not on tonight's agenda after a majority vote of the Select Board last week. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Conclude, yeah, thank you.
Based upon what you read earlier, that matters can go on an agenda, we can't speak. I would once again do a motion on our next meeting to have this on the agenda and to have someone, a representative for the Conservation Commission, based upon your, the T.A.'s email. My intent in that motion was not to influence anything, any other board. If you read the mission statement of the Conservation Commission, it states its purpose is to educate the public on the Wetland Protection Act and other wetland laws, which if these folks have questions because it affects their property immediately, they should have someone come before us and answer their questions.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just trying.
I second the motion.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is not something that's on here tonight.
Yes, you said you can put it on.
This will be added to an agenda, a future agenda, when I have everyone in the room that we can give these people, our constituents, an answer.
So why can't we put her on tomorrow?
I can't answer them right now.
No, we can't put her off for two weeks, though.
And I will, that's my ruling. Now, I'm gonna move to the first item on the agenda. The Board.
I object to, I object, I object to.
You can object, fine.
I object to.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are. Boarding Committee reports, report of the Chair.
You're out of order.
Signed, this, I signed the P.R. 2204.
No, Citizens' comments are over. Please. Let the citizens talk.
One more comment.
Come on up. We have, I think we have two. Hi, Evelyn.
Evelyn Neuss, Byfield. Some folks were here from out of state, and they were researching their ancestors on the Civil War monument. And they gave me a call, and they asked me if I knew how the monument was, the shape that was in, and I didn't know. So I went down and took some pictures, if you folks would like them. And it is, the base of the Civil War monument is in bad shape, and I think it's unsafe, too. So if you, I didn't know if you folks could do anything about that or not, but that's all.
Thank you. I was there Saturday, I saw this, too. Okay, Steve?
Can I have a coffee?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Steve Menjen on 14th Street in Plum Island.
Yes.
And I want to say something about the Plum Island bathrooms, but I emphasize, I'm not here to talk about the purchase of the property, that ship has sailed. But I am aware of some issues about the reconstruction. Part of it came up at the most recent Conservation Commission meeting, where we learned that apparently the building commissioner is going to make a request to the state to get a waiver so that some of the normal requirements about building in the floodway may not be met. That is, the requirements to go up on stilts, given the cost of the renovation. Number one, you know, Peter isn't in today, so I couldn't ask him to show me a copy of the document, though I sent him an email, and later on today, I sent you all a copy, too. Again, asking to see what the waiver request is gonna be all about, because we may want to contribute to that filing with the state. That said, I don't think it's a good idea to do it at all, because we're trying to set up a special thing for the town to build in a way that the public would not normally be allowed to build in the floodway. So first things first is to get a copy of the waiver request when it's written or in draft form. I'm also encouraging you all to take a look at it as well, ahead of making decisions, perhaps, and being stuck with, oh, this is what the state said. Well, it may be something we may not want to do. And how that plays out, and this might be a question for the Conservation Commission as well, if, let's say, a waiver is put forth, and the state gives a ruling to say it's okay by the state, do the local bylaws and wetland bylaws trump that so the con con could still say, no, you gotta go up on stilts, in spite of the state being willing to entertain a waiver. So again, I'm not trying to revisit the purchase of the property at all, but rather to focus on how it's going to be built, and though we can all talk about what doing it right is, I have my opinion, other people may have others, but I think it's important to try and do the construction as best we can, so we don't see overwash taking out the area and the newly constructed bathroom. And presumably, overwash is a big consideration there, and that could affect the kind of design that we want to build. So with that said, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Are there any other citizen concerns? Yes, Mr. DeMaile?
Bill DeMaile, 12 Orchard Street. I just wanted to thank the town and you folks for bringing the moving wall to Newbury, that was significant. Thank you for letting me have the honor of replacing one of the reeds there. I think everyone knows that I was a veteran, I served in Vietnam 11 months and 22 days. And I think if it weren't for my actions that earned me the Bronze Star there, my name could have been engraved on that wall as well, as some of my friends. So I thank you for that. And I also came to make sure that Chief Lucy had a copy of the letter I submitted to the Newbury Newport Daily News congratulating the five police officers who were promoted on the meeting that you folks had on August 24th. I think that could have been a night where those officers and their families could have had some celebration and been joyous about their promotions, but I think, I believe that was somewhat diminished by having their ethnicity and diversity challenged. That's what motivated me to write that letter, and my intent was that Chief Lucy could post it at the station to give these officers something to be proud about. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, he's here, right here.
Bill, thank you for your service, too.
Chief, do you want to take what he has for you?
Absolutely.
Are there any other citizens' concerns?
I usually throw mine out the window at this point.
Okay, so I signed the P.R. 2204, the P.R. 2205, and the P.R. 22, for both for Julie O'Brien, and the P.R. 2205 for the Select Board. Under Boards and Committee Reports, I just want to remind the Board, and J.R. is not here, but we have some kind of cyber training. Thank you all if you've completed it, I'm not sure if everyone has. I know I got another notification, I'm almost done.
This is a cybersecurity thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you if you've.
Can I, I called the state about that, okay? Because I didn't get a straight answer here when I called three weeks ago, three months ago. And they said not to fill it out.
Okay.
So they said to me not to fill it out because they said they thought it was a scam.
Okay.
So I'm just letting you know, it's like, is it legit?
It was, we voted to have. Matt, you want to come speak about that?
Sure.
I can show you all my emails that I got from the state, too, if you'd like to see them, Matt.
Hi, Matt Cooper, IT Director. Yes, the town is taking part in a cybersecurity, ongoing cybersecurity training session that is put out to basically every town employee and appointed member. The whole point of it is to not only raise awareness, but teach you how to be mindful of some of the obvious and less obvious scam tactics. Every member of this board was signed up for it, and it is absolutely coming from the state. Some of the, you may receive emails that may not look familiar, they, depending on if you fall for the phishing scam or not, it will send you to a link that goes, whoops, looks like we have something to learn, effectively, and then sort of review the bits that tipped off that particular message as a scam. But yes, the emails coming to your Select Board emails are very much state sanctioned and part of cybersecurity training.
So why would I receive one from the state saying it was a scam?
I'm not sure who you spoke to.
I spoke to the person that sent me the email. I says, is this legit, what's going on? They said, this is not, do not fill this out, this is a scam.
Okay, is there a reason why nobody asked me?
Yeah, what?
I could have quickly told everyone, yes, this is totally a thing.
So I'm gonna end this here. Matt, can you take this offline with Mike, and maybe, Mike, you can forward your email to Matt?
I will, don't worry.
Sure.
If I may inquire, you said all the Selectmen were signed up. I was never told we were signed up. I got the same similar emails, and I've been hacked a number of times, and I assumed that they were a scam, so I have ignored them. So just so you know, no one told me about it, I assumed they were a scam.
And I was told they were a scam.
Okay.
I'll show, but, but once again.
We can absolutely, we'll look into that offline and get to the bottom of it.
And Matt?
Once again, communications are not good.
I made no distinctions, I'm just kind of slow to respond. How's that?
Oh, no problem. I get it. It was put into place moments before I got here, but I'll absolutely take it up with anyone concerned afterwards offline and explain everything away.
Honestly, if you don't want to participate in it, you don't have to. I mean, there's no law that says that you have to, but that's what they are.
Also, you should get the name, you know, so you can answer.
I'll get the person, I get the emails, 'cause I saved every email.
Good, thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so grants, gifts, and donations, well, at 7:15, let's step back for a minute. Do we have a public hearing? Jeff?
Yeah, I'm gonna read this, and I haven't had a chance to pre-read it, so bear with me. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, September 14th, at 2:00 15 PM, in the second-floor hearing room in the Newbury Municipal Hospice's 12 Kent's Way, Byfield, Mass., 01922, the Newbury Select Board will hold a public hearing to consider the application submitted by the Plum Island Blue LLC 171918-20 and 22 Fordham Way, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951, for a new alcoholic beverage, Section 12, on the premise hotel license. Said license to be exercised at the Blue Island, at Plum Island Blue LLC 171918-20, 22 Fordham Way, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951. A hotel comprised of 46,000 square feet of indoor and outdoor space, and space consists of main builders and 445 cottages, and outdoor lounge area and beachfront outdoor space. All persons interesting are wishing to be heard relative to the proposed all alcohol beverage liquor license application should appear at the time and place designated above. Alicia Greco, Chair, Newport Select Board, Newport Daily News, Publish One, and et cetera, et cetera.
Julie, did I have a motion to open in a second for that?
No.
Okay. Let's step back a minute.
Motion to open.
Can I adjutate a motion to open in a second?
Second.
That'll boy, Michael.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Julie, could you, can I confirm that the green cards, the return receipts from all certified butters have been?
Yes.
Okay, and illegal ads have been received?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask the two people that are here, I'm assuming this is the applicant and the applicant's representative, to please present the project to us.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you so much for having us. I'm Attorney Marcy Costa, McDermott, Quilty &amp; Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, and with me I have Tyler Thompson, he's the proposed manager of record at the premises. We are here before you presenting our application for a Section 12 All Alcoholic Beverages Inholder License, as well as the approval of a management agreement for the hotel as well. The management agreement is something that's really become more popular in the last 10 to 15 years, especially with hotels. They are having experienced companies come in, manage the properties, and that's what we're asking for here today, as well as the new application for the alcoholic beverages license. The addition of this license is really meant to be an added amenity for the guests. They'll be stored in the main office kitchen area, where they do store the food that's prepared for breakfast, and it will be served at the lobby check-in counter. It is meant to give the guests the ability to purchase alcohol on the property and enjoy it while on the property as well. It's not meant to turn the hotel into a bar, attract a rowdy crowd, it is a very relaxing, tranquil space, and that's exactly how they want it to stay. Right now, it really is an amenity just for the guests of the hotel to be able to purchase the beverages from the lobby and bring them to their room and sit on the deck. Almost all of the rooms have deck space, a lot of it overlooking the water, the private beach, the lounge area. So this is just, again, to be an added amenity. Tyler is the manager at the hotel, he is with Lark Hotels, which is the proposed management company. He has been in the property management business for over five years, and he is a U.S. citizen. He is a Massachusetts resident, over the age of 21 years old. He is familiar with the rules and regulations as they pertain to the sale and service of alcohol, this town, and the A.B.C.C., and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The management company is really excited to be here in Newbury, managing the Blue Inn on Plum Island. They've been managing the space since January of this year. Come in, brought their, their team and their expertise, they have a number of properties that they manage in New England, New York, as well as California, so they are very experienced in the hotel management industry. They operate hotels that have these types of alcohol licenses on the premises in a number of other places, and they're really excited to bring this opportunity to their space here in Newbury and give their guests just something else to really solidify it to be a great trip. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
I was, I was down the day, and I guess it, it looked perfect. I mean, it was like, the young lady down at the desk explained to me the whole layout, how you were just gonna disturb, and I, I think it's a great idea. So my best of luck to you, if anything goes tonight properly.
Thank you.
Sherry?
No. Other than, so this is, this is basically, this allows like the guests to have alcohol and bring it to their room and enjoy it in the privacy of their suite.
Yeah, so it allows them, with the on-premise, it just allows them to purchase it there, and they can consume it in any of the spaces on the property. So of course, their room is an option, as well as when they're on the beach, the private beach located with, on their property, and the outdoor area, they have a lounge area with fire pit and stuff like that, so just gives them the flexibility to bring it to all those spaces.
I'm surprised you haven't been in before this.
I'm very surprised you haven't been in before this.
And I actually really wish you well. Is there going to be a bar area, that, there's no bar area then, open to the public?
No, there's no bar area, and right now, the plan is everything will be served in cans, so it'd all be pre-mixed cocktails. It's not going to be bottles or cups or anything that can break any glass. So they operate a similar model at one of their other hotels, and it's worked really well, so they're gonna bring it here and continue using that model.
And Alicia, did we have any red flags or anything going through this process? Nothing?
No, the only, I included some of the hour information, just for you to think about.
Did we have any, any notes, any emails or anything from the public regarding this?
No.
Anybody send anything into the town?
No.
No.
So we've got no written correspondence. I'm gonna ask any other members of the public here would like to speak about this project? I'm just gonna ask you to step aside for a second.
Yeah, absolutely.
We might call you up again. Thank you.
I have just one question.
Come on up. This is the chief, this is our police chief, John Lucy.
I wasn't prepared to have this, you know, this discussion, but having, listening to your dissertation, one question that popped into my mind was, when you say the alcohol be provided to people staying at the hotel and using of the private beach, is there anything that delineates what's the private? So in other words, we don't want people walking down the beach thinking it's okay, you know, beyond the scope of your beach? So that might be something, if you don't have something in place, you might want to, 'cause that, I can see cause.
Yeah, we have a large rock wall, as you know, the erosion on Plum Island, a huge thing. So we've got, it's probably 10 feet tall, but there's only two staircases that go down to the public beach, and each of those would have signs and everything.
Okay. That was my own concern.
Thank you.
Congratulations for the work done.
Is there anyone else from the public here that would like to speak? Okay. So similar to the last, this is from my Board, similar to the last liquor license that we gave out, it's really our purview to make sure that the liquor stays on-premise, 'cause that's the license.
Yep.
But see, there's really no opposition to this. The town does have one license. I'd like to maybe ask the Board what the hell they feel about granting this license?
I personally think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem. I think that they seem very well organized and very with it, and I wish you well.
No, I'm totally, as long as, you know, this has gone through our town council, and we've looked at it, and we've crossed all our eyes, and I'm.
Well, this will go to the A.B.C.C.
I know, yeah. But we've presented it in the right fashion, our vote is good to go to the A.B.C., I think. It's great.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm surprised they haven't had it before.
So you guys, you're looking for your hours, or just for?
We are asking for the maximum number of hours legally allowed by the states, so the 2:00 AM closing hour, and then on-premise, it's 8:00 AM, and then 10:00 AM on Sundays. So we're seeking just the maximum. Of course, the hotel may choose to limit those hours and have service be, and before 2:00 AM, but having that flexibility, they do have the ability to use that if, if necessary.
So the note that we have?
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you, stupid tonight, would you repeat what you just said, so I can really digest that? You're asking for?
Absolutely. We're asking for the ability to serve until the maximum hour of 2:00 AM.
Which is, which is 2:00 AM?
2:00 AM. And then the service hours in the morning would also be those allowed by the states. So 8:00 AM on Monday through Saturday, and then likely 10:00 AM on Sundays. Again, of course, we're, listen to the Board, and if you have any concerns about that late hour.
I think, personally, I think the big difference is, it's not a bar. It's like you're calling a room service to bring you a bottle of Don Frayery on, basically, or something.
It's not really room service.
Oh, isn't it?
It's.
Can they go down, they're going down?
They just have to go down to the lobby.
Right, they gotta go down to the lobby, Mike, okay, but they're not, they're not, it's not sitting at a bar. That's what I'm saying.
No, no, it's, it's kept in a separate storage area.
Where the, the hours of the places we got here are basically all bars, okay, and that's, you know, and that's, they can get louder and stuff, so.
Are you gonna serve food at all?
They serve breakfast right now, it's brought in, there's no real kitchen on the premises, so there is no food service.
Okay, so Massachusetts.
Was there a kitchen at one time at the Blue?
We prep breakfast, we don't have a cooktop, but we bake scones and that sort of thing.
So you have an oven?
Yeah.
So Massachusetts state law says that licenses cannot be barred from serving alcohol between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM. Liquor licensing authorities may grant extended opening hours between 8:00 AM and 11:00 AM, and extended closing hours between 11:00 PM and 2:00 AM. In no event can sales be made between 2:00 AM and 8:00 AM. So I think what I'm, I'm hearing you ask us is that you would like to be able to sell alcohol on the premise until 2:00 AM?
Yes, for the extended hours, yeah.
Just so that, I mean, we don't have anything like this in town, because we have restaurants, so this is new laws.
What is, where, Old Town Country Club, what are their hours?
Let me see, Plum Island Grill.
And then the Old Town Country Club.
Old Town Country Club is, they go to 2:00 AM on Fridays.
2:00 AM.
Saturdays, they go to 1:00 AM, and Sundays, they go to 1:00 AM.
Yeah, and I think they've had those hours for a long time.
Long time.
Then Old Newbury Golf Club is, they're only till midnight.
And I don't have a problem granting these extended hours, because it's a hotel, and for the resident, for the guest, it's their temporary residence, and so there's no drunk driving, they're, they're technically at their home for their, how long are their, however long they're staying, so I don't have a problem with the, and as you read, the sales can be made between 2, up until 2:00 AM.
But it has to be drunk on premise, so we're not having, and nobody can walk in there and walk up to your lobby and.
Buy alcohol and.
And wander off.
Take it off and put it in the car and.
No, it's not off premise, everything is to be consumed on premise, within the confines of the property at 171918 to 20, and 22.
Do we have any other comment from anyone on the Board? No, you're good?
Good.
So are we pushing for a maximum hours?
No, I'll adjutate a motion.
I'll make a motion to let them do the maximum hours.
Of what?
Till, whether they still, till 2:00 o'clock.
Yeah, but when are they gonna, when are you gonna open? You wanna open at 11? Or do you all wanna open at, like?
Plus eight, eight to two.
That's for that Bloody Mary in the morning?
Yeah.
I was thinking the mimosas.
Get up and start the day.
The mimosas, sorry. Eat that orange juice.
So we thought you had hours.
8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Saturday? Is that what we're?
Hold on, I have to look at this, wait a minute. I thought I saw something in here.
I mean, this is a bit of a precedent for us.
Yeah, it is.
But it's certainly a different type of venue. And where we do have the Old Town Country Club, which is a little different than other things, 'cause it's a club, I mean.
So Blue wants Monday through?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Till 2:00 AM, starting at 8:00 AM.
8:00 AM to 2:00 AM. And then you want Sunday, 10:00 AM?
Do 10:00 AM until 2:00 AM as well.
Do we wanna go to 2:00 AM on a Sunday?
Technically, it would be Monday morning.
Yeah.
Strictly.
Good point, Jerry.
Now, I imagine the A.B.C. is going to have, you know, you're still gonna have to have like a bartender that's tip-certified and everything.
Yep, he's, Tyler's tip-certified, so he's done that and gotten that certification, so that he.
You're not gonna sleep.
It's part of the job.
So Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM, I think Sunday, 8 to 10, to midnight, I think, because once you go into 1:00 AM, now you're 1:00 AM on Monday, Monday morning. So I think till midnight is what I suggest. 12:00 midnight.
I think we're, I would oppose that. I think we're trying to get away from the Blue laws, it's about time.
Oh, well, wait a minute, let me step back for a minute, because Old Town Country Club is Sunday, 12 noon to 1:00, 1:00 AM.
Yeah, so precedent's been set.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd probably mirror the Old Town Country Club.
Okay, so Monday through Friday, well, Old Town Country Club is different. Monday, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and Sunday, 12 noon to 1:00 AM. Sunday, 12:00 noon to 1:00 AM. They want Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM through 2:00 AM, Sunday, 10:00 AM to, to 2:00 AM.
Yeah.
I, go ahead, I'll open, we'll wait for discussion.
So, is that your motion, Michael?
My mo, I, I like the hours that they said. I have no problem with those hours.
Okay, so what do you, what's, can you read the motion back, Julie?
The motion was 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM Sunday for hours.
Yes.
Okay.
That motion is made, thank you.
That was the motion.
Yes.
Jerry seconded it. Okay, discussion, Jeff?
I, I'm not firmly against it. I think probably what we have in place with the Old Town Country Club would be kind of appropriate, you know, that, that hour less on Saturday and, but I'm not casting stone.
The difference I see is that these, they're, 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 the Old Town Club, people have to get in the car and go home.
Exactly.
The inn, they're not going home.
They're not going home.
They're staying.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, that's what Jerry, I agree with you 100%, which is insane what Jerry said. So, I have no problem with 2:00. Especially when I come down.
You'll have to stay there.
I know that. My wife checks out every once in a while.
Oh, now you'll have a home away from home.
With the beach view.
Oceanfront view.
That's right, can't beat it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
I have a question.
Oh.
Real quick.
Come on up. Come on up, state your name and your address.
Leslie Matthews, 111 Main Street. The question is that even though this, they're temporary home, how are you going to fleece them from walking out, perhaps slipping their drinks into like a travel coffee mug and getting in the car?
That's something that, as you know, the manager, being tip certified, Tyler's going to make sure that they are monitoring the guests. Part of that is making sure that they're following the rules of the hotel, it is, has to be drunk on premise, and also, you know, looking for signs of people, you know, over service, trying to leave the premises, the same things that, you know, a regular restaurant or bar are supposed to look for in their customers as well, the same thing that he's going to be looking over as well as the other.
So, anytime a guest come in, comes in after being out, if you find that they have legally had their limit of alcohol, you'll be able to persuade them not to enjoy.
That is part of the tip certification.
Everybody that will be serving will be tip certified?
That's the plan. Well, the manager on record will be, I can't be there 24/7, but we can certainly get more tip certifications.
Isn't it a Massachusetts law that everybody who is behind a bar has to be tip certified after a certain period of time?
Yes, so Tyler's the manager of our group, he's tip certified, he'll be there 40-plus hours a week, and then the assistant manager will get his own certified as well. So, everyone is aware of those signs necessary to make sure that nobody's over serving in their car and driving away.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie.
Thanks, Les.
Thanks, Leslie. And I imagine that's going to be spelled out pretty heavily.
Well, the A, B, C, C, they perform sting operations, that's really their purview, that's not really the town of Newbury's purview.
Well.
Anyone that serves alcohol, that over serves alcohol, that sells alcohol to minors, that sells alcohol that's supposed to be drunk on premise and they're taking it off premise, that's all stuff that qualifies, falls under the A, B, C board and, and you'll lose your license over that.
Uh huh.
And so, it's, you know, it's not like it's something that can, it's not, shouldn't be taken lightly.
Yeah, no, very seriously, everyone will be trained. Again, it's meant to be, you know, an added amenity to add a pleasurable experience to the hotel, so they're going to be doing everything in their power to make sure that's exactly what it's doing.
Thank you.
See, the only, the only place it could get edgy, and that's up to what the people that are going, okay, the license will look at, and you'll have to be able to answer that, is, you know, the people that are staying at the rooms could have guests, and the guests could end up.
Driving.
Yeah, it'll be the same, you know, the same standard for the hotel guests, as if they have a family member that lives in Newbury and is visiting. You know, the goal and the priority is to make sure that nobody's leaving the property drunk and getting in a car and driving away, so that's going to remain. The addition of this adds that to be a real number one priority, the safety of the guests is what Tyler and his team are really there to make sure is in place, so.
One thing we can do as a board, if you can think about this, is ask that signage be put outside, all alcohol is to remain within these boundaries, and I think where it's a public beach and it's really not delineated, that might be.
I think you already said he's going to do that on the, he's already said you would do that on the way to the beach.
But we can make it part of the license.
We can do that.
I mean, that's something we can do if we decide to do it.
It's like, I think it's overkill, but it's like, as long as the people know going down to the beach, what the chief just said, that was an excellent point, chief. You get, you go to the tad line, it's an open beach.
Yeah, all of our, all of our property has, has like gated off entrances for everywhere it goes, so there's, there's room for signage on every entrance to the beach as well as to the back area where the cottages are, it's fenced on three sides, and then the fourth side is not fenced, at least has a man gate through it, so.
I mean, it's up to the applicant to keep the alcohol on premise. If they don't, they'll, they'll lose.
Still kind of review the thought that, and I'll throw it out once again, and I don't, you know, suspect your diligence to pass, but I still think where Old Town Country Club has precedent of certain hours, that those hours might be a little more in keeping, but I'm not stuck on those hours.
Well, I, I, I don't hold the Old Town Country Club as precedent, because I think you're mixing apples and oranges, you're talking about a golf course versus.
No, no, it's a, it's a, it's a, on the river.
Old Club on the river.
Old Newbury Golf Course is a total different.
I thought you were referring to that.
No.
I think this is unique, like Jerry says, because it's a, it's an inn. It's different, we don't have any, although we have that new inn on Parker Street, but I don't think they serve alcohol.
Parker Street?
I mean, not Parker Street. Over the Parker River.
Yeah, the one that has, they don't open yet, I don't think.
I don't know if they open yet, but they're Bed and Breakfast.
Yeah, they're Bed and Breakfast, and they didn't apply for liquor.
They didn't apply for liquor license, so.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but look how long it took Blue.
Can I have a question, Jim?
Yes.
You said this is the last one, is it, can the board increase, this might be a stupid question, can the board increase the number of liquor licenses available, or do we have to go to the state for that? So, let's say if the, let's say if the place, we approve tonight, let's say the place in Parker River comes three weeks, years later and say they want a liquor license, have we maxed out our liquor licenses?
I don't know, we can look into that.
Okay, I just should know the answer.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Does anyone, do you, Tracy, know the answer to that?
So, I have a motion here for operating hours Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you all so much, really appreciate you hearing us this evening.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have an appointment for Samantha Holt for the stormwater management team. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion made to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have approve a one-day liquor license for a wedding at Spencer Pierce Little Farm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Julie, is everything in order for this one?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Another one-day liquor license for Bartoberfest at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Everything in order for this, Julie, as well?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a one-day liquor license for a concert at the Byfield Community Arts Center. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Everything on file, Julie?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, town administrators, report.
I've got some good news, good news, and good news.
Good.
Which is great, yeah. We received notification of our Chapter 90 grant award. It's the amount of $269,580 this year, and James will be putting together a listing of the roadways that he plans to address this season.
Were you not against Tracy, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
You're not again.
$269,580?
Thank you.
Yep, I'll need a vote of the board to accept that.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We received our OPERA grant funding, so you've already accepted a portion of it, but now we've received the Essex County reallocation, and that is in the amount of $1,388,415. That, it has pretty stringent guidelines, although the, the manual's a few hundred pages long. Primarily, they're, they're, they'd like to see it used for water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, which is something we've been talking about at the last couple of meetings. It's utilized for response to pub, the public health emergency and the negative impacts that that has, that the pandemic has had on the community and for revenue replacement as well.
Does this help with like the COVID nurses and everything?
Yep.
What was the figure, again? Thank you very much.
Okay. The United States Army Corps of Engineers, we're engaged with them for the Portsmouth Harbor Federal Navigation Dredge Project, and you have, you may recall, you had voted to approval of about $200,000.
Yes.
To pay for the transportation of the materials, and we have received notification from DCR that the Commonwealth through DCR is going to be covering the cost of the partnership.
Nice.
So, since the, the dredge spoils are going offshore, and it's going to benefit both, you know, the erosion issues, so it's going to benefit the shoreline as well as the reservations. There, as of right now, I mean.
Anything changes, right?
It's great news.
It's great news.
But DCR will not be seeking any partnership funding from the towns as of right now. So, again, that's $200,000 savings for us.
Awesome.
The COVID team did begin meeting again, so you can expect periodic briefings from.
Tracy?
Yep.
If Bruce and the MRBA had anything to do with that, you know, receiving some of that funding, I'd like to compliment him.
Sure.
And it seems to me that his diligence and setting up planning and being in a straight line probably.
Well, he's been the number one mover and shaker.
And, and Lenny.
Yep.
Since way back.
Yep. Yep. Oh, yeah, the COVID team began meeting, so you can expect periodic briefings from our leader, Chief Lucy, as, you know, as time goes on and there's anything to report, so he'll be back on our agenda every now and then. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission held a regional roundtable last week. They announced the launch of their free assistance program for small businesses. We have put that information up on our website. It basically has the potential to assist Newbury small businesses that have been negatively impacted by COVID. It's going to help pair them with local business advisors to help them to seek out grant funding, federal grant, federal and state grant funding that may be available to them, as well as assistance with, you know, marketing or accounting or anything they should need along those lines, and that, they can find more information at wermv.com or by going to the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission's website. Fiscal year 2021 closeout, we expect to have all the reports completed and submitted to DOR for their review by the end of September. And the only other thing I wanted to request, and I'd need a vote of the board, is a carry forward of 33 hours of my unused vacation time through December, and that one, that also needs a vote.
I'll entertain a motion to carry for hours.
Motion, carry, second, I guess.
Second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I don't remember if we had, Julie, do we have a vote on the acceptance of the OPERA grant funds?
No, we didn't do that in this meeting, no.
Right, I, I do need a vote for acceptance of.
So, I'll entertain a motion to entertain the OPERA $1,388,415.
Aren't we putting a copy for the horse? I would be much happier to see a plan how we're going to use this, how we're going to use the money before we vote.
I can't predict how we're going to use it in the next five years.
Really?
Really.
Well, then, then, I guess I, I, I'm not in favor of proposing it or accepting it early.
Well, if we don't accept the grant, we're going to lose it.
We're going to lose it.
We'll lose it?
It'll be redistributed.
All right.
Motion, motion.
I think when they're giving us money, it'd be best to take it and then we can formulate a plan for what to do with it.
Well, yeah.
Let's, let's, let's make a motion and then discuss.
Yeah, so.
Motion to accept.
That's like giving someone a blank check, and I don't like that.
Second it. So, I have a motion, Julie, in a second, now we can have discussion.
I don't like giving people blank checks, saying.
It's not a blank check, the town, we're the town, remember, we're the town.
I know that, Alicia, you don't have to educate me, I didn't miss law school.
I'm not trying to educate you, no, I know that, but it would, the town is taking in the money, and however, the town, which is all of us, decides how to spend it. If I'm, am I wrong?
Well, we need a plan, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely, we need to vote on a plan.
Yep.
If I may, Ms. Jimmy, yeah, all expenditures have to be approved by the federal government and their audit as well.
I was just going to say, it has to go back through them, so we're not even sure it would get it.
Well, we're very, this is very strict what we can spend this time, correct?
And in all likelihood, we won't spend it all.
Then when, if we, if we don't spend it all, where does it go?
It gets redistributed to the communities that, that.
Other communities or we keep it?
No, no, redistributed to other communities.
So, it's, it's, it was to help COVID with COVID expenses, right?
Yep.
So, sometimes the bigger the communities have the more expenses.
Right.
I mean, grants like this have been really well received in a lot of communities, and also, I think schools have gotten some of the same type of help, and you know what, Jerry? You know, it has to go back through them, we'll, we'll probably play, you know, it'll be hard to get the money anyway, so it's, it's good to just have it out front. So, we've got to take advantage of all these opportunities.
So I have a motion in a second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before Tracy Lee's gonna ask.
Hold on one second, Mike. Jerry had a question.
Yes, regarding COVID, are our numbers going up? Perhaps I should address the chief for that.
Yes, there's a slow increase. The last check was in a fourteen-day period, it was fourteen cases. It might actually be a little bit less, I didn't run the numbers today.
Are they breaking down these new statistics in, you know, the breakthrough cases of people, whether or not they've been vaccinated, who are becoming ill?
As Tracy said, we'd be just reconvened to start going through that data and digest it to see what it means to us, so I don't have an answer going right now.
Is there any discussion in your group about requiring all town employees to get the vaccine, since the federal government has just required all of their employees to be vaccinated?
We've just started meeting, and we're having discussions, we don't have the data, we don't have any, we don't have a path yet.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a path set in for recommendations.
I just want to thank, I, I got three phone calls about school situation, and I called Tracy, and I want to thank John for addressing it right away. I met with the principal at Newbury Elementary, she was thrilled that we got a police officer out there right away, so thank you, John. Because I guess the first day of school was a little, a little hairy with the number of cars, some impatient patient parents, and I guess there was a couple close calls. So thank you for getting, getting your officers out there right away, and it's like, it solved the problem really quick, thank you.
All right.
Getting calls.
Like I said, that's why I sent, I sent it to Tracy, I'm trying to do it the right way.
Appreciate it, and if any of your constituents approach you, as always, give us a call.
Okay, well, like I said, it's like, she was a good, she was like, good friend, so I just, I just passed it on.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is to review and approve recognition bench plaque design. Did you guys see this in the, in your packet? Julie, I know I, I double-checked with you, but you just want to tell the board, this is going to sit flat on the bench, right?
Right, because the height of the slat is three and a half inches, so this is two and a half inch height, six inch long, so, yeah. It will fit flat on there.
So it will look like this, is it going to be bronze, do we know brass?
You'd have to pick silver or gold were the two backgrounds.
What's the material it is made of?
It says brushed stainless steel, or brass laser engraved nameplates. Do we want stainless steel or brass?
Brass.
I think brass. Do you like brass?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Are these guys' names on the inside wall, inside? When you walk in the police station?
Not everyone goes in the police station lobby.
I know, but I know that, but I'm just saying.
I mean, they may be.
Everyone's names, I, I just think we got better places to spend money than putting, this is a personal opinion.
This was already voted by the board.
I know, I know.
So I'm not going to go back on that.
And Mike, it's kind of, everyone's listed inside, which it should be.
Right.
And these guys really kind of.
No, I'm right.
I mean, they worked every week.
Since it's only sixteen ninety-nine.
And they're volunteers.
Big stick about it.
They're volunteers.
I know.
I like brass, what do you think, Jerry?
I like brass.
Brass is solid, I think.
You like brass?
Yep.
Is it going to be black? Brass with black. Julie, do you know?
Did we spell Keller right on this one? Spell.
Why, did I spell it wrong?
I don't, no, I'm saying.
You need to double-check.
I think it's spelled fun inside, so.
Oh, inside the building?
Yeah, so I don't know.
Oh, I see.
So make sure we spell it right.
Yeah, I'll double-check everybody's names.
Before that one, that plaque was put together, everyone was told to check their spelling of the names forty-five.
Us too, yeah, us too, so, doesn't matter.
So just double-check the names, yep. All right, so, we like this?
Fine.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
To have this thing here in brass, with black.
Yep.
Motion in a second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got something done. Thank you.
All right.
So the next item on the agenda is a social media policy.
Yes.
Now, I want to go over this, because Jerry, honestly, she took a lot of her time, and she went through this, and she made thoughtful comments, and I want to go through them, and I want to have a discussion on each and every one of them. So, first of all, thank you for doing, doing this.
Ask a question.
Yes.
The page you get there, this one, the documents?
No.
I don't, I don't got that one.
You should have, it was in here.
No, it's not in my packet. Hold, maybe, I'm sorry, hold on, this is, this is, okay, I'm sorry.
The back.
Dear Lord, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that. All right.
So the first, I'm just going to, actually, we're just going to go over Jerry's comments, okay? So the first one is Section 1, Purpose and Scope. The purpose of this policy is to set forth the rules governing the administration of town social media accounts, town employees' use of social media accounts, and town employees' use of external social media accounts. Nothing in this policy is intended to interfere with, restrain, or prevent employee communications or expressions that are protected by law, including without limitation the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, state and federal whistleblower law, and state and federal labor law. This policy applies to all town employees, however, to the extent that this policy conflicts with the provisions of all employees' collective bargaining agreement, such agreement will control. Jerry's comment had to do with the collective bargaining agreements. And I confirm that this is not anywhere in, doesn't, doesn't conflict, there's no mention of this in the collective bargaining agreement, so there's no conflict.
Right, because we just did the firefighters, and there was no, no reference to it, although the, the, the response says, as the contracts come up for negotiation, this item will be addressed if necessary, so they're not, they're not addressing it, apparently.
Right, so this, my, my understanding, that this policy will.
We haven't voted for it yet.
Right, well, once we vote it, once we vote a policy, that will, will, I guess, rule, because there's nothing in the collective bargaining agreement. Correct? That would make sense, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that one answers that. Okay, the second one is Section 4F. So, 4F. This is the use of town social media accounts by town employees in their official role. Town employees are prohibited from disclosing conversations that occur amongst town officials' employees outside of public forums unless authorized by the town administrator. Information about policies, rules, or plans that have not been finalized or officially adopted by the town may not be posted unless explicitly approved in advance by the town administrator or applicable supervisor. So Jerry's comment was, says this is too limiting, because there is no room for input in the formulating process of a project or plan from interested parties if they are not advised of same early in the process. And town council's response was, I don't think that this follows from Section 4F. The section only applies to town employees' use of a social, of town, of a town's social media accounts in such employees' official role. Moreover, it only prohibits from disclosing internal conversations and deliberative processes on town social media accounts unless they get permission from the town administrator. It does not prevent them from formulating a project or a plan. So, how do you feel about that, Jerry?
You know. Yeah, well, I mean, it, it, honestly, it prohibits discussion, you know, and, and I think the public needs to be informed, and, and that's why I, quite frankly, I, I, and the town employees are part of the public, and they need to be involved in the process of educating.
But it's, this says it's prohibited from disclosing conversations that occur amongst town officials and employees outside of public forums unless authorized by the town administrator. So that could be hearsay. It could be somebody's perception on it. I don't think that, that unless, unless they're given a directive to post something like that on social media, I think it's, it's someone's, you know, personal opinion, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Can they put a personal opinion on their own personal site?
Oh, absolutely, this has nothing to do with their own personal site.
No, well, we get into a person's later personal site, later on.
This one.
And they can't do it.
Can't do it.
This one here, this one here is only about the town.
Right, okay.
Okay? So, we're going to keep that section. Okay, Section 3, no, I'm sorry, Section 4H. If a town employee is contacted directly by a reporter or any other member of the media, he or she must immediately refer all questions to the town administrator. H, so Jerry's comment was, language should be added, that reference should be to the department head or the town administrator. This allows for when the town administrator is not available or out of office. And town council's recommendation was to add his or her designee to that, to that line. So that's Section 4H, adding his or her designee. How do we feel about that?
I don't have a problem with adding that, but I guess, why is this paragraph put in? To me, it's a little bit disingenuine. If we're talking about a social media, this isn't social media, if somebody contact, if somebody from TV or the newspaper contacts a town employee, it's not social media.
All right, you're right, hold on.
Also, does this include us?
It does include us, and all members of all committees and boards.
I just, I mean, if, if the press called me about something, I would answer how I felt, not for the board, how I felt as a board member. Okay, and I think that's, I, I want that right still to exist.
It says town employees.
Right, I just asked.
Considered town employees, the board of selectmen are.
I, I don't think that's what the spirit of this means.
Well, I want to make sure, before I say.
We're special.
Because we are, we are special employees, and we get paid by the town.
And, and that's a slippery slope when you start talking about the spirit of the law. That's, I've had many clients go to jail because they violated the spirit of the law. You've got to be careful on that.
So, I believe, I believe, and it's, I don't know if it's in the Town Administrator Act, or if it's in her, your contract, Tracy, but it's someplace in here, you are the.
Public Information Officer.
That's it, the Public Information Officer. Do you know where that is?
I think it's in both.
Okay, so.
I know it's in the Town Administrator Act, but.
It's all, it's actually always been in the Town Administrator Act, but let's, let's maybe discuss one thing, because.
But.
I know I've been contacted many times, especially when I was chair, it's my role, let's say, in an emergency situation on Palm Island or something like that. When does this kind of, like, when does this work and when does it not work?
So, that's a good point, so I think, well, two things.
Immediately refer all questions to the town administrator, so.
So I think that.
Good timing.
I think that, that we, that this should mirror, this policy, all of our policy should mirror what is in the Town Administrators Act.
Yep.
At town meeting, and also, you know, the contract, not so much, but this, the, the town administrator, because that was passed at town, town meeting. Do you think we could change this to, because really, it wouldn't be an elected official? Because we're elected, we're not, and there are other boards and committees that are elected, or, you know, so if it's a town employee.
This one's going to take some thinking. It's just.
I agree, if this isn't a, this isn't an open and shut call.
And I mean, I'd like to say it's cut and dry, but like I said.
Well, and, and also, what happens if they want to contact and talk about an issue that someone has with Tracy, about your job performance? Are you as communications, that's a conflict of interest.
Well, there's HR, you have an HR board for that. But I have a question, though.
But the HR board isn't listed here, it's all, we for all, immediately all questions.
So if we strike this, if we strike this, is there another policy somewhere?
This is a social media policy.
Yeah.
This isn't a performance evaluation policy.
Right, right.
I mean, there's plenty of things in social media about all of us that are, talk about our performance and those types of things. I don't think that's what this is meant to be responsive to.
My example is, you're, if they, they want to talk about you, you can't, you can't handle that, but this, so.
I think I probably could, but, no, no, no.
Certainly unbiased.
That'd be like me handling me.
So I, I'm just trying to show that there's an inherent conflict.
I didn't author this, this is not mine, this was presented to the town, and it was, yeah, it was.
Are we, did we have a problem that this, I mean, because I, I don't understand why suddenly we have to have, you know, all these rules and regulations and, you know, policies?
Well, like I said, this is established, it would be no more than if someone from the media contacted me to discuss your job performance. So.
Well, that's okay, because, because I'm, they didn't contact me about my job performance or anything else.
Where I think it gets into trouble is, if you're working, let's say, like I have many times in my life, and so have others, and you're, you know, on Palm Island in an emergency or other places, and the media asks for, what do you think's going on, or how many cottages have fallen in the water? You're not going to say, I can't speak to that.
Well, so I have a question, is this, is this answered someplace else? Is this, is this, what this?
Say, not elected officials, I mean, you can, the intention is that if someone were to go to an employee, and have, a newspaper reporter would go to an employee, that perhaps that employee might not have the entire big picture.
Scope, yep.
And scope and understanding, so it should be directed to the Public Information Officer, whoever that may be, if you choose to make that the chairman of the select board, that's fine, you know, but it should go to a central public information officer.
So how about that? How about if we strike, we for all questions, instead of calling it town administrator, we call, we strike it and put Public Information Officer?
I like the thought that we don't take, take town, elected town officials right off the table.
Yeah.
If we get asked a question, I think we have the right to answer the question, if elected by the public.
But I don't know, is this covered in another policy, is my, is my question?
The reason this is before you is because.
It's not covered.
We don't have many policies, and this is very standard. I, I think it'd be hard for us not to, to find many communities that don't have policies related to these issues, because, especially now, because it's coming up more and more frequently. But if the board isn't interested in moving forward with it.
Oh, I'm interested in moving forward with it.
I mean, that, that has, I mean, I understand the thrust of this, and I'm totally in agreement. I mean, it's sometimes hard when you think some of the town employees might know more about, let's say, James on an issue on Palm Island during an emergency than I might, but it does take and significantly restrict, let's say, elected officials to being able to discuss something with a, with a.
Reporter.
Reporter, and I don't know how to get around that. Other, I mean, I would have been in violation of this if it was that to the letter of law a million times.
Me too.
But it's not, the difference is, it's not a town employee as opposed to an elected official kind of thing.
But, but we are considered town employees.
Could you offer language that would remedy that? I mean, yeah, what do you think we can put in here and fix it?
Well, my question is, if it, is it going to apply to people who are on committees as well? Appointed committees?
Appointed committees.
Should it, should they, should they be stifled?
This is hard, this is hard, Tracy, because like John did a layman's job, talking to all the reporters on the drowning on the river.
Absolutely.
Now, does this in any way control him from being a?
Absolutely not.
See, and I quite understand, come on up, John, so, yep.
This might be helpful, Mike, not me.
I'm just trying to figure this out.
But, I know that it was mentioned, you know, that you've got to be careful of the slippery slope, and I'm sorry some of your clients went to jail over the slippery slope, but the, the purpose of this is for continuity of information.
Yep.
And that is the spirit of it. And the having, when, when those incidents were happening with the drowning, I was in communication with Tracy to make sure that we had the same message, and to make sure, because I don't know if the fire chief was, she's the common depository of information, so what is getting out to the public is consistent, concise, and she knows all the pieces that I might not know. And that, in, in my department, as a microcosm of what you're discussing, it works phenomenally in my world, in my profession, that, that's the way it works. We have somebody that is authorized to address and speak to the press, or speak out, you know, speak for the department. And it's not because we're control freaks, it's because when the message goes out, somebody in uniform, a police officer in uniform, the public interprets that as a person that knows what's going on, just, he's in uniform, he must know what he's talking about. That's not always the case, it might be outside the scope of his realizations or the facts that he knows, but if he calls me, or my designee, which is exactly the verbiage I would recommend, that gives the person the, the liberty to assign, to extend delegation of authority to speak to the press, and that solves your problems that you're discussing right now.
I mean, it's a perfect example in your pair of, you know, the way the police force runs, not every policeman is telling, you know, they're saying the chief can speak to that.
Right, but there are some situations where the officer is permitted, by my permission, to speak to that person, because I have a conversation with that officer and say, these are the facts, if you're comfortable with this, and you understand what I'm telling you, then sure. You know, there's, there's a dialogue, and it's not about control, and it's not about controlling, stifling, it's about making it accurate.
In a concise, in a kind of.
Concise, clear, informative.
Consistent message.
Yes.
That's well and good, chief, but according to this, you had no business talking regarding the drowning, you were supposed to refer immediately.
If this was in place, if this was in place, well, I did do that, I do by practice, because it's good practice, I do that, but if this was in place, I would be complete compliance. I did exactly what I said, she delegated me to be able to do that.
This doesn't say anything about a delegation. This says, and it's, it's black and white, if a town employee is contacted directly by a reporter or any other member of the media, he slash she must.
We're not talking about what's in the, we're not, we're not talking about that anymore. We're talking about.
We are.
Changing the language.
Well, I am, I am chief.
Well, we've already moved past that.
No, we haven't, no, we haven't.
We've moved past, because we're talking about delegation of authority, I thought. We've moved past, because we're talking about delegation of authority, I thought. I thought we had, I thought you guys had a conversation with town council.
Well, that was one of the comments that you wanted.
And that's who I'm speaking to. I hear what you're saying, but that's who I'm speaking to. If you adopt that language as presented by the town attorney, delegation of authority answers everything you're worried about.
I do agree with John on that. We were thinking of how to rewrite this.
Okay.
Well, Jerry, young comment.
Because it needs to, because what I'm saying, chief, is, as it stands right now, you had no authority to talk to anyone.
And we've moved on from that, and that's not in place yet. You guys haven't voted on it yet.
Right, exactly. But, we're discussing it, so why would we put it in place?
And we, and the discussion has moved on to delegation of authority, I believe. But if I'm wrong about that, I apologize. But anyway, I'm just trying to help with that.
The discussion has moved on to how do we word this the way we want it.
So, Jerry, you, you said in your notes, you said that the reference should be to the department head or town administrator.
Right. I mean, you know, the chief, if it's a police issue, you know.
But, as a police issue, to your point, I am fully, we have a similar, I, I am full support of what you folks are deciding on. You should do this, and I would be duty bound to comply by it. And if it's worded in the sense of delegation of authority, which gives the person in charge the authority and the freedom and the latitude to let the professional speak on the matter at hand, having had all the information. Because I, as I said, and the perfect example that Jerry, that Jeff brought up, was that, that tragedy out on the Parker River. I don't know who has spoken, what other components are in play. I think I do, but I don't know. But if you have a policy in place, I know that she does, and if everybody follows a policy, I know that she does. So, I converse with her and say, this is what I got, this is what's going on. She might say, whoa, 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 wait a minute, this is what so and so said. Do you want to talk to this person first before you have to, your backpedal in front of a news camera? And that's the most uncomfortable, ugly thing to have to do. I, I'm not the one that's supposed to call on you.
Can I ask a quick, quick question? You have vacation time, granted. What happens if you're not around?
Delegation of, delegation.
Delegation of authority.
Okay, so who is next?
I usually delegate the chief of police.
Okay, but, okay, what happens if you're both gone?
It doesn't usually happen like that. We're very careful.
But it's happened.
I, I don't know that it has.
I, I, the hypotheticals could go until we go crazy.
I know, exactly. So, can I make a, can I make a motion real quickly tonight? I don't think this is ready to be voted on.
Well, we're going through them line by line.
Right, right.
I think we need to go, I think we should go through this. Jerry spent a lot of time on this.
I, I agree.
And I, to your point, Ms. Blaze, I read over half a dozen other towns and cities, their media policies, and this was the most restrictive, the most restrictive. I think it's Topsfield. Their, their policy is one page. I mean, this is, this is just, to me, it stifles, it stifles people.
You don't have with you, do you, the Topsfield one?
I don't, I don't.
That's why I said, why don't we, why don't we all take a deep breath? Put this off for two weeks at least.
Well, let's go through Jerry's.
Let's go through Jerry's questions first, because.
And I mean, look, we didn't come here to not.
Right, I agree. Right, but I'm just saying, we're not ready to vote on this tonight.
Yeah.
No way am I voting on this tonight.
Well, I, I, we can go through, we've already agreed on one and two. So, the three here, this, this third one here, we have, we, we, we like his or her designee. So, if a town employee, and you wanted to eliminate elected officials, right?
No, you can't.
Can't.
No, you cannot do it. Elected officials are considered an employee for tax withholding purposes from the.
All right, all right. Thank you. I don't want to, don't, I'm not going to entertain that again. So, this here, this town employee is contacted, we're gonna, we're gonna, we, elected officials? I'm just going to make a note here, because we're not voting on anything tonight anyways.
Oh, God.
So, or his or her designate, do we like, instead of questions to the town administrator, do we like the public, what is it called, Tracy? The public?
Communications officer.
Communications officer? I like that language better than the town administrator?
I'd probably love to see the one in Topsfield that's much, I think, I think this is way too compli, I think this is way too complicated.
I read, I read half a dozen.
All right, we will, we will.
It's way too complicated.
But we're still going to go through Jerry's notes.
I will go through them.
Okay, so, that's section three, we have an issue with.
Excuse me?
Number three, rather.
Also, excluding elected officials, are we also excluding members of committees, appointed committees?
I would say no. Yeah, I would say no. I would just say elected officials. But, again, we're gonna, this is one that we're going to have to look at and look at other cities and towns, and we're not, we're not going to be voting on a policy tonight anyways. But I just want to get through this.
Okay.
So, section.
Four.
Number four, section five B. Section five B, this is use of town social media accounts by town employees outside of their official role. When po, B is when posting content, town employees must use the following disclaimer. This posting is my own and does not represent the town's positions or opinions.
And although, by adding my language, not necessarily. Because there will be times when the person, the post does agree with the town's position.
So, use of the town's social media accounts by town employees outside of their official role. So, this is outside of their official role. The town, town employees are prohibited from using their official town title unless they are posting in official capacity. So, whatever they do in their own private world, they're not allowed to use their official title unless they're posting on a town social media. So, when posting content, town employees must use the following disclaimer. This posting is my own and does not represent the town's positions or opinions. And Jerry, you said add the word necessarily after the word not.
Right.
So, you wanted to say this posting is.
Does not necessarily represent the town's positions or opinions.
Does not necessarily represent the town's positions or opinions.
And, and that's just the standard language. If you're on Channel Seven, you know.
And now, and now town council said, I advise against this edit as it defeats the purpose of the disclaimer by suggesting that the employee's post may in fact be the opinion or position of the town.
Yeah, and sometimes they will, they will be in agreement, and sometimes they won't. So, it doesn't necessarily have to agree, that's why.
But, sorry. The use of the word necessarily sort of implies it could. If my opinion and your opinion happen to be in alignment on the same issue, my opinion is not your opinion. It's still my opinion versus yours. So, my opinion as a citizen may completely align with the town's opinion, in which case, great. My opinion is not the opinion of the towns. My opinion is mine. The town has, may say something similar. But again, I, there's no illusion that me saying my opinion is not that of the towns makes it clear the town can never be held liable for misspeaking, or saying something incorrect, or misleading that creates problems. To simply say necessarily means, well, I might be speaking for the town sometimes. Necessarily out of the mix means, no, I'm not.
So, well, contact Channel Seven and tell them they got it wrong, but.
Well, you could be speaking for the town if it passed a town meeting and was accepted, and the town voted on it. But if you're starting to get out into the land that the town hasn't voted on it, and it's not town policy, then this is not a bad statement to say.
Without the word necessarily.
I don't really care one way or the other. If, I go with town council anyway, so.
Yeah, I, I want, I don't like the word necessarily in there. I just, I just think that it implies something that may or may not be there, and I'd rather be black and white. That's my personal opinion. So.
Black and white, no.
Not gray.
Well, I mean, like I said, if you're, if something's already accepted, if it's a bylaw, or it's zoning, or it's whatever, it's already been accepted by the town. You can comment on that. It's just already part of the town.
So, can, do we want to keep this word in here? Can we make a, can we take a vote on this, this one?
What's that?
I'm not voting on anything tonight until we.
Right, well, so, I, I, I want to keep, I want this, I don't like necessarily.
Sorry.
I mean, we can vote to just keep the language the way it is and see what we stand.
Once we get the final document in place, we'll vote.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, let's continue. So, at, section six E.
Five E. Aren't we on five?
No, we just did five B. Now, we're going to do six E. This is use of employ, of personal social media accounts by town employees. Town employees are prohibited from posting town logos or trademarks, or photographs of employees in uniform unless the same is protected by law.
Can I ask a question?
Wait a minute. You can, one second, hold that thought. So, what is the word same referring to? It is referring to posting town logos or trademarks or photographs of employees in uniform. So, that's just a clarifying question you had, right?
Yeah, I thought the word was vague.
All right, so that was a clarifying question. Okay, Mike, what is it?
Quick question, like, at the veterans, at the wall, I took pictures of the chief and the assistant chief, and I took pictures of the fire chief and the assistant fire chief. Okay? Am I wrong in doing that? They were in a uniform.
Did you get them to sign a disclaimer?
No, but I just, I, I asked them, I asked them if they wanted the picture taken and put on Facebook, and being at the, I put a whole event thing on.
Right, but that's you personally. This is the town.
Okay, right.
No, it isn't. This is him personally.
Him, personally.
Use of personal social media accounts by town employees.
Personal, this is personal.
You can't do that.
I can't do that.
Under this.
And I, and I did, and I got, but I asked permission to, of John and Patty.
I don't remember that, I'm not kidding.
Yes, I know you did. I said, remember I told you, you actually, you both dressed up really well.
But under this.
See, I'm saying, I don't know, say, I'm saying.
I can't, I can't.
I can't, it's really vague.
You shouldn't be doing that.
It's too vague. It's because all I was trying to do was show the people of Newbury what a great event it was. I even got a picture of Bill putting the wreath up.
You didn't ask me.
I know, I'm sorry. Know what I did, know what I did ask though? The little veteran, the little marine that was with you? She's my neighbor.
Coast Guard.
I didn't know she was my neighbor. The, was, yeah. She lives in Withington Street, and like, what a sweet kid, so.
But, getting back to the point, this is the, the personal use of social media. It's not the town's social media. It's Mike's social media. And this says he can't do that.
And I do it all the time. I mean, another day.
That's why I say, I think this policy is so overbroad and has a stifling chilling effect on First Amendment rights.
So, the last, the, wait a minute, let me see what else you have here.
That one go by the board.
So, section, um, section seven.
What about five? We.
We just covered it.
I know, what, what's, what's the answer?
I mean, the answer sounds, the answer sounds great when you're talking about, you know, the moving wall. But when you start posting things about car accidents or some stuff.
But I can't do that.
I know, but someone might.
But I'm saying, but I'm just saying, this is.
So, I can understand the intent of this. It's just, these are very hard to stratify, the layers of intent.
Well, we're going to fix it. So, the last one is section seven. This section is overly broad and should be stricken. This section is based upon the language used by the Division of Open Government in its decisions on this very topic.
Six, seven.
Seven. Use of town or personal social media accounts by the members of town public bodies as defined by the Open Meeting Law. Well, do you want to just wait until you see what you get there?
Yeah, I mean, one question I have, I feel that this is overly broad because it's the, the, again, the person's personal social media. Does this apply to emails?
Social media, if it's not email, emails are not social media.
How do you know? It, it, a, a strict reading of social media, when they define social media as a third person platform, I'm using AOL to get my emails to you people, then that's a third person platform. So, I, I definitely think we should consider, if it doesn't include emails, I think we should say, you know, this policy does not include emails because a strict reading, and the law will always go restrict this reading.
Well, a defined social media platform shall mean websites that facilitate user participation, networking, and collaboration through the submission of user-generated content. Examples of social media platforms include without limitation blogs, wikis, and microblogging sites such as Twitter and Wikipedia, social networking sites such as Facebook and LinkedIn, video sharing sites such as YouTube, photograph sharing sites such as Instagram, and bookmarking sites such as Pinterest.
But I'm making reference to the next paragraph. Social media identity account.
Yeah, identity accounts.
Shall mean a specific user identity, my email address, or account that has been registered on a third-party social media platform. I'm registered on AOL. That's, you know, so it applies to emails.
I might be able to clarify that. Your AOL account, I'm sorry, can I get up so it's?
Thank you.
My apologies. Your personal account is on a third party. Your town account is on the town's mail server. So, there's, it's not really a third party in that point. If you're emailing from Gheevi, then that's one thing. If you're emailing from your AOL account, that's quite another altogether.
I don't use my, I don't use my town account.
This is, this is, this says, it makes reference to my personal account. So, what you just said is, is not applicable, because it's talking about the personal accounts.
Yes, the, the intent is to prevent personal accounts from speaking on behalf, basically skewing official town communication channels. So, yes, if your work account would, absolutely, you may communicate through your work account on work stuff. If you're going to discuss work stuff out in the public on your personal account, that's where the policy comes in. I mean, I mean, nothing as bad has happened yet. We like to say, just don't be evil. This is popular, Google said that back in the day, just don't be evil. That's great, except by saying, don't be evil, there's, well, there's no law that said I couldn't do this. You know, that's the standard, standard defense of, well, you said, I didn't say I couldn't do it. And the act of doing said thing could create multiple problems for the town.
All right, thank you, Matt. So, Jerry?
Yes.
Could you please pull some other policies from other towns that you researched and bring them in?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, a lot of this language was from MMA.
The whole policy was from MMA.
Be curious to see what other towns did with it. It'd be kind of cool, yeah.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
And may, I use my email to address you people because according to this policy, I may not, I may not, because I'm not supposed to be, I'm not supposed to be friending or following members of your public body, messaging or responding to a comment.
Well, that's very true, because I've taken.
Posting or commenting on a town matter.
Yeah.
Can I have my permission to send this to you?
Well, no, because that's a violation of the Open Meeting Law. You can't do that. That's, I've taken many classes.
I cannot, you just asked me to, to get copies of.
To get copies of policies from other cities and towns and.
Yes.
And send them to us.
Right. And I'm saying by doing-
And when we come at our next meeting.
By doing that, I've violated this policy, I think.
No, I don't think so.
See, that's where we- this is a slippery slope.
Well, we're going to fix it. But at least we're moving forward.
And I guess that's my initial question. Why do we have to fix it? This is like, this is a solution in search of a problem.
Because we don't have- but we don't have a policy on this.
I know, but why do we even need?
Oh, because we do. We do. I mean, I- I was looking at other school district policies for this, and there was one school district, I don't know if it was Malden, Melrose, Medford, one of those M towns. They had, um, they had that the superintendent of schools has- their policy, their social media policy allows him at any point in time to go to any staff, faculty, or staff and ask them to pull up their social media account, their personal social media account, and so he can review it. And you can be fired on- immediately based on content. So it's- it's-
Well, we've- this country's gone the wrong way. If that's happened, that country's- this country's gone the wrong way, though.
I'll bring it in, and I'll show it to you.
I know, but I'm just saying, does it mean that somebody in Melrose is right?
Yeah, it doesn't mean it's right.
No, just that it's right. I just think it's- I think it's-
I'm shocked that that would-
I am shocked that it's constitutional.
It did. Okay, so I'm gonna- I'm make a motion to table the social media policy.
Second that.
Oh, oh. New discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, Michael.
Yes.
You know, if something goes wrong, I mean, you can have your email account solicited anyway, so it's not really yours.
Yeah, so. Well, I'm Jim.
Ethics Commission, Attorney General, you know.
I know, I- I know.
No one- no one owns anything anymore.
Yes, but they have to do that with a court order.
Order. And like I said, it was a little-
You know, when there's- when there's a lawsuit or there's a legal issue. But otherwise, going just hunting to an employee's, you know, uh, media account, ooh, that's-
No, but in private employ- private employment, and I know this is not private employment, you can be fired for what you post online about something derogatory from your company.
Right, right, and we- we see it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have some correspondence. We have letters dated, um, from- letters from the Commonwealth for the Marine Fisheries regarding shellfishing closures dated August 20th, 20- and 22nd, 2021.
Those are always raining, by the way, for folks that are out there.
Has anyone heard anything from, um, about the surge being dropped in? I haven't seen- I used to get-
The what?
When the- we got heavy rain.
The Merrimack River.
Oh, the CSOs?
Yeah, I haven't seen- I used to get updates all the time. Massive amounts of surge were dumped.
I don't think that has been in- do you know?
We've had massive amounts of rain.
We get them and we put them on the town's website.
Okay, so we don't-
You're signed up for that right now?
I believe so, no.
So can we- can we-
Mike, I wouldn't go swimming a lot.
I know, but I mean, but I'm just saying, can we? I get questions sometimes, so I don't, because I've been a little busy. I don't check the so- the town website all the time. Can- something like that happens, going to be sent to Selectman immediately.
I think also when it happens, I've gotten emails.
I used to.
I've signed up for that.
Well, I mean, one thing is-
Must not have had any of it.
We must have. We had access to the rain.
Diana DeZoglio worked very hard on that- on that signaling thing. Signal- yeah, you got it, Jeff.
Signaling.
Signaling process that's set up with the uplands, upriver towns. And they've made great strides.
They have.
And it's all in the process and still going through.
Yeah, but you're right, I almost swore.
But I mean, somewhere along the line, I don't know how many other rivers can do what the Merrimack River can do.
And the last thing that we have is a letter from Shannon George with the Teamsters Union Local 170 regarding possible disruption to service. So anyone that uses the Ring and Ride here in Newbury might want to keep their eye on this. There's, um, a potential for a strike. After several months of bargaining, it is now obvious that the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority does not believe the special service drivers deserve the same pension benefits as the commuter services. They urge people to contact the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority and saying, asking them to continue service.
And actually, they're- they're asking for the board to send a letter of support for these drivers. The question, these drivers are not the volunteers who take our elderly.
No.
Okay. It's their professional bus drivers, the small, little, white and blue bus, I believe.
Right, they work for the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit.
And they're not getting equal benefits, so I- I-
So this- this is something that has to do with their collective bargaining agreement.
Right.
And in the past, we as a town is not- has not gotten involved in that.
Well, maybe- maybe we should, because I'm a- I'm a great supporter of, you know, people who work hard and these bus drivers who are taking the elderly to their hospital meetings.
And they're sick.
They're sick. They should- they should be supported. They're front- they're frontline workers, you know, during COVID, so.
I encourage everyone to, um, to actually write a letter and if that's how you feel to them individually.
And I would move this- this board to send a letter of support to the address that-
I would second that motion.
Alyssa, I mean, excuse me, I have an Alyssa that I work with every day. So Alicia, um, I mean, I don't know enough about this, Jerry, to send a letter. I have no history. I have no understanding. Unions are unions, and sometimes they do good service and sometimes maybe not good ser- I mean, I don't- I don't have any history on this.
I don't, yeah, I don't know enough about it. If you want to make a motion in a second-
If you want to make a vote, then vote. But I don't-
All in favor?
It was motion.
Motion made, seconded.
All in favor of sending a letter?
Yes.
Any opposed? Yes.
I just, I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, I don't want to stick my toe in that pond. Thank you, though. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have meeting minutes.
And warrants.
Oh, sorry. We have meeting minutes. Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
A motion made and approved, but before we go, I- before we go, I got questions that I answer.
Hold on.
Let's do these second.
Motion to approve minutes. Any second?
Motion.
Michael, your seconded. All in favor? Aye. And we have warrants, Julie?
Yes.
Motion to sign warrants.
Motion.
So, should we vote on the minutes? Yep.
We did. We just did.
Oh, we did? All favor? Then I get my hand up now. How's that?
Uh, motion to sign warrants.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that.
Oh, yes.
I had spoken to everyone this- today about the article in the paper about Amesbury received $2 million for eight firefighters. Everything's paid for for the first three years. Equipment, training, okay? We are definitely short firefighters. I was told there was one firefighter in the town of Newbury on Labor Day night.
All right, well, I don't know if that's accurate, so.
I was told, I was- I was going to bring food over, and he says, "Don't bother. There's only one fighter. We brought three pizzas over." So I was told that.
That's something that is not under the board's purview.
Well, you know something?
So I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
When can we talk about it if it's not tonight?
It's not under our purview. You can take it up with the town administrator.
I think public safety is a public thing.
Okay, Mike, I'm going to go back to this conversation that we had earlier today.
I have to have it talked about at the town administrator.
Make it, Michael.
I made a motion to the town administrator to bring this up tonight. It wasn't. So I'm bringing it up now.
So the town administrator and the town administrator's act.
Oh, I know.
It is her. I- we had this conversation earlier today, Mike, and you want- you understood earlier today.
No, I didn't. I said I wanted an answer. Why we didn't look into this?
And what did I tell you to do?
I- and I did, and I thought she was going to bring it up in her report, and she didn't.
But see, there's nothing that this board can move on with this, Michael. So if we can't move anything on it, there's no reason for us to have a discussion over it.
We can discuss it.
For what?
But we don't know, Michael, Mike, we don't even-
We don't have enough help.
We don't even know if it-
We had one person.
The chief isn't even here.
I know, he should have been.
And perhaps the question would be that- that Mr. Doyle is trying to get at is why town administrator, aren't we going like Amesbury after these grants for the- to pay for new firemen since we-
I was made aware of this late this afternoon. I will have a conversation with the chief. As I told Selectman Doyle, I'd be happy to discuss it with him and just answer those questions.
Well, it's in the front pages, they have.
We'll discuss.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Now can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.